Good morning, everyone. Welcome to April, April 1st, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. And we have a bit of an unusual workshop today because we are combining a special meeting with a workshop, but we have a present proclamation to get us started, so I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Grants Pass and Josephine County. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U.S., and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of our children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah Bristol, Mayor of the City of Grants Pass, proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have someone here to accept the proclamation, and if you wanted to say a few words, please use that microphone, make sure that the light at the base of the microphone is on.
Hello? Is it on? Yeah. Thank you. I'm Chrissanna Albrecht, along with my colleagues Tina Stafford and Carrie Compton. We make up the team of our local CAC, and we want to thank you, Mayor Bristol, city council members and staff for taking on the proclamation this month for April. You know, child abuse is something we all need to take care of and be a part of and help protect the children of our community and our county. And we want to thank you for adopting this for this month. Want to let you know that Grants Pass Public Safety is an integral part of the child abuse in our CAC in bringing initial reports, investigations, reviews on our multidisciplinary team, case reviews, and prosecution. And so keeping children safe in our community is, takes a village. And so it's very important for all of us. Our new building, just catty corner from here, is up and running, and we have an open house on April 12th. I hope you will all attend. We are able now, under one roof, to offer forensic medical exams. We offer medical forensic interviews, and soon, we hope to be offering counseling therapy in-house. So that will be a great thing. We also do have a nice conference room for our multidisciplinary team reviews, and we offer information and referral and family advocacy. So we just put out 207 for the children we helped last year, pinwheels in our front yard, and they're just beautiful. They're just spinning along this morning, so I hope you get a chance to look across the street. And in the evenings, we put in blue lights in our outdoor lighting, so that blue signifies the month of child abuse awareness, and so we'll be lit up this year. So thank you so much for taking on the proclamation and being a support to our agency.
Thank you, Chrissanna, and your coworkers for the very important work that you do. And I also just wanted to mention that beautiful building across the street. I've received several questions and compliments, and I think it will be a very welcoming environment for the children you serve, and also just a real asset to the community to have such an attractive building in place there. So thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead, Dwayne.
Well, they're leaving, but I just wanted the people to understand that those people were not protected until recently from giving interviews on children. We should expand it, and we should expand their protection because people that do the interviews are not protected under the law, and it's nice that those people are now protected from giving the interviews to children that weren't protected before recently. And they do a lot of that stuff, you know, a lot of volunteers, too. So they're, we have to give them a lot of kudos for what they do with children. Appreciate it.
Yeah, difficult and important work. All right, let's move into our council workshop. We have, first up on the agenda today is public safety funding. Hi, Aaron.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Today, you'll hear from me and J.C., the Finance Director, and we'll be discussing with you a couple of items when it comes to public safety funding. This is, the subject is to discuss some council-identified public safety funding alternatives to provide additional funding stabilization for public safety's delivery of services and bolster the health of the general fund, relationship to council goals as it is under enhanced community safety. The presentation is broken down into five different parts. First, we're just going to give you an idea of what the target revenue is, so you have a general idea of the budget from a standpoint of what we're discussing. Then I'll go into food and beverage tax and special service district discussion, and then J.C. will come in with the transitional tax, income tax, and general fund reserve policy discussion for council. Moving forward on this, Mayor, however you'd like to facilitate, we can potentially do each one of these items, and I'll pause and see if there's questions on target revenue, then move and pause in food and beverage, and that might be the best way to go about doing that. There are some details associated with these, especially food and beverage and special service districts, so I can go as fast or as slow as you'd like me to, but there are a lot of details in this, and just let me know if I'm going too fast or too slow on the information. When it comes to the public safety target revenue, this just gives you a general idea of what we're looking at for estimated fiscal year '25 budget. We have expenses for police support and fire services totaling about $33 million, thirty and a half million dollars, with revenues, if you look at the different revenue categories, including our new public safety utility fee, bringing in about $28.6, $28.7 million. So there's still a gap where the general fund is providing some additional stability to balance a budget of about $4.7 million. So one of the items council was wanting to discuss or have on the agenda for some additional information is public safety food and beverage tax. So the history of that is council did ask for staff to develop an ordinance that would provide an opportunity for council to adopt that if they so desired. At the February 21st council meeting, council did consider the ordinance, but after that discussion, provided some general direction that they'd be interested in sending that to a vote potentially in the November 2024 ballot, but that was yet to be defined, and I think that's part of where we're going now, is where exactly do you want us to move or do any kind of movement on the food and beverage tax? The food and beverage tax would implement a tax rate on prepared food and beverages that would help provide the resources for continuing public safety services, and that's why you were discussing this. Now, I've got a lot of details on this. If you'd like me to continue the details, it's items that we've discussed before, and I can do that, or I can skip through some of these, but in general, it's, the tax would be on prepared foods, all foods and beverages sold by restaurants located within the city, and all foods and beverages sold by caterers for events located within the city except alcoholic beverages, which would be exempt. The tax imposed that council was considering was a 3% tax. That would bring in a potentially projected revenue of $2.3 million. Within the code, the council considered there were a lot of exemptions associated with it also, and what we were doing is we were mirroring the code based on Ashland's food and beverage. So from a staff perspective, we thought that there was some merit to being consistent if you were, if we were to implement a food and beverage tax, that we would regionally be something similar that could assist just the public's general awareness and knowledge. It could assist the businesses' general awareness and knowledge if they're both, if they're serving both communities. There's a list of potential exemptions that were being considered for council. We also had in the code and ordinance some operator duties. Each operator shall collect the tax, so it would be a tax that would be collected at the restaurant itself, and then ultimately provided to the city. Every operator that collected the tax, the way the code was written, would provide for an opportunity for the businesses to retain 5% of all taxes collected to help defray the cost of collections and remittance. There were, and we are looking at doing that from a quarterly, calendar quarterly basis, where they would submit their information and their tax to the city. And there were penalties also associated with the code that you reviewed that provided penalty of 10% of the amount of tax in addition to the amount of the tax if someone failed to remit any portion of that food and beverage tax that was imposed. There's records associated with the code also that you reviewed. It was the duty of the operator to be liable for the collection and payment to the city, and that the records would, could be inspected at a reasonable time if the city did request that. There was also confidentiality, where the actual numbers and the remittance of the information would be kept confidential for the most part, except for maybe the disclosure of the names, addresses, or persons who are operating the business, but the actual business information and the quarterly reports would, could be kept confidential based on our This was just some additional confidentiality and disclosure language that was associated with the code to help reassure that businesses' information would be kept confidential. And there was a clause, which I mentioned earlier, that would allow the city to examine records and books if the city so deemed appropriate in a certain business. And I'll pause there. That was just a general overview of your food and beverage tax.
I have a question. If we could go back to Slide 4 with the public safety target revenue?
Yeah.
Just what, what expenses are covered in this $33.4 million?
There we go. So what expenses are covered?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what level of growth does this include? Because it, I'm seeing that it includes the utility fee.
Yeah, so from a standpoint of service level, what it does is it brings back, say, for instance, the temporary freeze of the captain position. It does not include any new FTE. It's just basically status quo with the refunding of some of those temporary frozen positions. Does not include any new FTE.
But at the bottom, it has a $4.78 million gap, and that's after adding in the utility fee?
That is correct.
Okay. It's just the numbers aren't what I recollected. Go ahead, Brian.
Well, as, the numbers may be a little slightly different, but there was that, the utility fee at bringing in approximately $3.3, $3.4 million was only a portion, and if council may recall, with that, we were having a discussion that that might not allow us to bring on additional FTE, and we would need some additional fees or revenues to do that. That's sort of represented in that 4.7, which may have been a little bit of a lower number, but pretty close to that. These represent what we're looking at now. We've had about a month, and that, those numbers change within a month as we get closer and closer to the budget cycle and the budget period. So it's similar in nature, but yeah, this is not adding any additional FTE. This is more of a status quo with the implementation of the utility fee.
Right.
Yeah, so just to get a little bit more clarity on that, you say that those numbers include bringing back the previously frozen positions, right? And just looking for a little more detail, like how many positions is that? Go ahead.
Yeah, so for the 2024 budget, we had two retirements, one police captain and the deputy fire chief. And so to create some savings, they were going to hold that position open all the way through the end of the year. And so this would bring back those positions to still be in the FTE count.
Okay, so if we, if we didn't pass the utility fee recently, we would have been looking at an $8.1, $8.2 million shortfall potentially? Is that what I'm gathering?
Yeah, roughly. In the 3.4, if you'll remember, there are some fees as far as administration, so then that was always that 3.3-ish million, but there's another $100,000 in administrative fees that police and fire will have to start paying their fair share of utility billing.
Okay, so if council wants to add those positions that we've discussed, I think there was seven or eight positions.
Yes.
Those positions are not reflected in these numbers on the slide.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I guess I, I'm still real lost on this because I thought that, I thought that with the new utility fee, that that would bring us up to a status quo level as far as funding the gap, and that then if we wanted to add, I believe it was eight positions, it'd be about another million and a half dollars. And then if we wanted to recover general funds, there'd be a larger gap. So is this not including a general fund contribution?
This is including the general fund contribution, which you see as the gap, which is the 4.7.
Okay, so that is the general fund contribution?
That's the general fund contribution.
Gotcha. That helps a bunch. Okay.
And just as a reminder, this is the bare minimum to get to that 30% fund balance reserve.
Okay. Does anyone have questions either about that or about the food and beverage tax?
Okay.
No? Move on to the next topic?
All right, the next topic is fire district. Let me move down here on the slides. Getting closer. Here we go. Service districts. That was an item that council wanted some additional information on, so I'll give you some general information on districts, but also go into more specifics about the city's experience in attempting to create a fire district a few years ago as an example, so we can utilize that as a learning experience also. So from a district perspective, the cities do have the ability and legal ability to form a service district, a special district, or rural protection fire district based on O.R.S. Chapter 198 and 478. You do that through three main ways. One, you can form a district through filing a petition with the county for the formation. That would be a signature gathering petition process. You can also form a district if there's consent of all property owners within the area of the proposed district. So if all property owners were wanting to be in and create a district, you could do it that way. Or you could also form a district through the process by order of the county board of commissioners, which would then go to a vote of the public. So as an example, potential districts, although we will focus on fire in the next few slides, just to give you an idea, if there was some, the dollar amount and associated tax rate to cover that, if it was a district from a police perspective, minus dispatching records, you'd be looking at about $18 million a need, which would be about $4.76 per thousand as a taxing district rate to cover that amount. For fire, you'd be looking at, it's almost $10 million, so that would be $2.61 per thousand. For parks, we're looking at the expenses of about $3.2 million. That would represent a .85 per thousand tax rate if you were to form a parks district. And then 911 is another common district that's seen in areas, although we're not, if that's not ripe for our area, 911 districts are more regional in nature. It could be something that we could discuss and work on in the future, but it would be something along the lines of us partnering with a number of the other 911 agencies to create a district. It would be a small dollar amount and would not have a major contribution to our public safety issue, but I'm just using that as an example because that is another district that's been formed before in other communities. So when it comes to fire districts, we do, and district formations, we do have some experience. Back in 2016, council did have a goal to create, an objective to create a fire district. The reason for that was to try to deal with the criminal justice financial challenges and to provide some stability and funding with the elimination of the public safety levy if you were to create a district. We did hire Matrix Consulting, who did a feasibility study for us, and after the feasibility study was done, council did opt to do a fire district ad hoc committee to review Matrix's report and provide a recommendation on how to move forward with the creation of a fire The feasibility study in general did focus on forming a fire district within the city limits and the boundaries of the city, only the city, not going outside of the city at that time to begin. So it would be the initial, same initial rate payers that are paying now, taxpayers that are paying now, would be paying the same. If voters did approve the district, all of the current fire rescue staff would be transitioned to the new district, along with the, those assets, and it would have been a relatively seamless process just from a standpoint, it would be a, you know, there would be some change, but it would be a relatively seamless process because it would be like-for-like. You wouldn't be changing the service levels or the service areas, and you'd be just changing it being a city operation to a district operation. The benefits that were considered in the Matrix report, and when council was looking at it, I thought I'd list some of the benefits and maybe some of the drawbacks also, just as a discussion point. From a district benefit perspective, it is a funding solution for a community desire level of service. Special districts are a growing form of government in the United States. Districts provide focused services, and all funds collected are expended on that specific focused surface. There is a potential for the service area to grow and standardize for rural areas within Josephine County, which was also seen as a potential benefit as the, if there was a fire district. Whether or not the city grows from an annexation perspective, a fire district could grow independent of what city boundaries are. Other benefits of forming a district, whether it be a fire district or other things, because this, a lot of these benefits play and go into play with any of the districts that we did mention, is it is a consistent, stable funding source that would allow departments to implement long-range planning and purchases, eliminates instability of the utilization of a levy based on, depending on what the district dollar amount would be. Budget accountability would be separate from the city. Taxpayers more easily can see exactly where the resources are going, and it does provide for additional self-governance and potential increase in morale and local focus point on responsibility. Yes?
Are those boards elected, or are they?
They are, they are elected. So the way it worked, the way it works is the, the community would be voting in a fire district or parks district or whatever it would be, and at the same time, they're voting in a slate of board of directors. So if the district is approved, the board of directors are approved. If the district fails, there's been a vote on board of directors, but they have no one to, they don't have a true district, so they actually aren't seated.
So we can give them the parks district?
We could do a parks district, yes. And if you, and if you're doing parks districts, many times park districts, there are cities that have park districts, and they do expand outside the city limits also, and that could be something that if you wanted to explore, we explore also from a conversation with the board of commissioners, and if they're, they'd be interested in something like that also, but you could form it within the city also.
Go ahead, Brian.
So with a district, I'm just wondering how much duplication essentially of effort and infrastructure would there be? Meaning, like, for instance, if there was a wrongful termination lawsuit, let's say, so does the district have to have an insurance policy to pay that, or does it come from the city?
No, if the district would be an independent district, it would, the district would be responsible for that. There'd be a two-year period where there's probably a transition where they'd want a contract for HR services and those kind of things, but ultimately, the districts go and they're fully independent.
So they would need their own HR essentially department?
Yep.
They would need, I guess, their own procurement department? I mean, because the last time there was a vote, I remember there were people who would run for the board who didn't necessarily have any experience in, you know, in fire suppression at all. There were just, people, some did, some didn't. But there would be a lot of duplication, right? To be...
That's one of, I've got a slide here that talks about some of the disadvantages, and you're mentioning one of those points on the slide of the disadvantages. Other benefits is voters do have a greater influence over fire protection spending with the elected board, and they're just closer to the service level itself. Some drawbacks is what we've talked, and Counselor Pell mentioned some of those. Level of service, decisions transition from the city to a fire board, that could be a drawback, could be positive, negative, based on how council would see it. It does create another taxing district, and we would need to consider Measure 5 compression issues. I've got a slide here that'll explain that a little more. The, it does create a permanent property tax rate, which could be a positive or negative, and however, compression is affecting communities. District, special districts are a growing form of government, and as such, it is creating compression issues in some communities. And then, as Counselor Pell mentioned, it does create separate administration, separate board, separate, separate everything. So there are some, some additional or duplication of services that we're doing now that they would have to take on themselves because they would be an independent district. So when it came to the city and what we were looking at back in 2018, the feasibility study done by Matrix recommended $2.10 per thousand at that time. The ad hoc committee reviewed the recommendation from Matrix and made a recommendation to council that we ask for 203 per thousand and thought that that was a sustainable level for just the current service levels. The 210 did provide an opportunity for the fire department to go to three to an engine to at least Parkway, so it did provide an opportunity for some additional staffing. The recommendation that came from the ad hoc committee is that we bring forward a level that would just sustain current service levels, which means it could be lowered to 203. November 5th, 2019, there was a ballot measure for a fire district to 203, and the results are there on the screen. It did fail. And as I mentioned, today, the difference between 2018 and today, fire is at about $9.9 million, and that tax rate today would need to be at $2.61 to sustain the level that we're looking at right now. So just to give you an idea about compression issues in Measure 5, here is a list of some permanent property tax rates and our, some of our levies that are associated within the county right now. Moving forward in fiscal year '25 with the creation of the... with the creation of the Josephine County Law Enforcement District, there's now a new added-on law enforcement district of point ninety-nine cents per thousand, which has our total government rate of nine point four eight per thousand. So government has an opportunity to go up to ten dollars per thousand. So we're almost there at compression. We have an available fifty cents basically per thousand right now uh, before we start to go into compression. And then when you go into compression, of course, the, the, the levies are the things that are impacted first from a reduction of what they actually are able to, uh, to assess. And then there is a methodology that's relatively complex that also affects the permanent property tax rates if, if the levies first don't, don't affect the, uh, and the compression enough.
Erin, since that sheriff's law enforcement district is outside the city limits, would it not apply if we were to create a, uh, some sort of district that was only within the city limits?
If it was only within the city limits, that would not apply. And then you'd be at the dollar one point five per thousand. Yep?
Thank you.
I, I have a question. Yeah, my question is, because I, I recognize, you know, the tax rates and how much higher they are in other cities. So how exactly does the compression, if they don't have a levy, does that just start to compress their regular property tax?
Yeah, if they reach compression and it's just, let's say, there's just permanent property tax rates and then no one has a special levy, uh, then levies are first. And if levies aren't there, then, then the compression occurs on the permanent property taxes.
Just to add a little bit of information, it gets proportionally spread based on the actual rate. Um, it's a, like you said, it's a lot more complicated uh, in the sense that compression is calculated on each, um, property differently and when they hit compression. So generically speaking, it's a proportionate reduction.
Rick?
So when we're looking at that chart there right now, if we just stay the way we are right now, is compression facing us right now in the near future? Or only if we make changes?
Right now, we're okay in general from a compression perspective. I don't know what the future holds with regards to, to.
So any of our automatic increases put us into that compression? Or do we still stay relative?
So based on where we're at, we're okay. Um, the other thing to keep in mind with compression is the value of the piece of property. If we were to go through another recessionary period, we could still meet compression potentially by not hitting the maximum of the assessed value.
Okay, and then I think at one point, it was mentioned that the assessors are behind on the appraisals of different properties. So, um, we may have some cushion in there if they were to update.
Yeah?
Could be. Okay, thank you.
Rob?
So I'm a little confused on, uh, a couple of aspects of this. So, uh, currently, uh, the public's paying a dollar seventy-nine per thousand for public safety levy, um, plus utility fee, public safety utility fee.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see any mention here of any portion of the public safety utility fee terminating if, uh, there was a district. So how does that work? The public right now would be paying still to city grants pass public safety utility fee. Would they be end up paying twice essentially? That plus the full, you know, the, the full load on the, uh, the district?
Yeah, that, that ultimately would be, uh, we would have to look at the numbers on what you're looking at from a, from a fire district, et cetera. But we would need to explore that discussion. Uh, I didn't put a utility fee in here or the absence of a utility fee if you create a fire district because I don't have the fire district numbers in here. I'm just, I just have district numbers in general. But if you created a district, then you would need to look at that being a new revenue stream and a new service level that's no longer within the city operation. So then therefore, you look at your, your current public safety levy, you look at the utility fee, and you need to deter, you would, you would need to and can determine whether or not one of those could be reduced or eliminated to match the level of service that you're providing that you still, that still exists within the city.
Right, I guess what is confusing is on this, you do have, uh, June twenty-sixth, uh, public safety, um, uh, levy terminates. So you, you talk about part of it being adjusted.
Where are you on this one?
District formation and public safety levy timeline?
Oh, I'm not there yet, but I was going to explain that. That's hypothetical in nature, so I just wanted to talk through that with you.
Okay, well, you talk about half the hypothetical, but not the other half, I guess. Anyway, thank you.
Brian?
So I had a question about, like, let's say, for example, let's use the, the new Josephine County Law Enforcement District as an example. That, that district, as I understand it, only provides a portion of the funding for the sheriff's department. They have another funding source. So, so how does that work if, if we create a district that's only a partial funding source for something? Like, for example, let's say we created like a supplemental funding source district for fire. Does, is there a board for that? And then city councils in charge of the other piece? Or how does that work if it's not fully funding whatever, um, item it's, it's funding?
You know, I'm not sure on how to answer that. In fire district itself, uh, if you're looking at a fire district or a parks district, uh, there, you're creating a permanent property tax rate and you're creating an independent board, say, for instance, a fire district. If you create a fire district, you'd have that independent board, uh, in place because the fire district is separate, it's a separate entity from the city, which can expand and grow, uh, and it does not have to be concurrent with the city. Um, so, uh, if you were to, there's, I'm guessing multiple ways. If you were, if you were wanting to somehow create a district that was not fully funding the fire, but then the city was going to enter into some kind of contractual obligation to pay the fire district additional resources to make them whole for a contracted services above and beyond, there's, I mean, that opens the door to a lot of things. I haven't seen it to where you've created a district that only partially funds.
Well, the sheriff's district is, they just did it at the county. So, so I'm not sure if any of us are aware how that works with them getting partial funding from this new district and then partial funding from, you know, the existing funding. So I'm.
So that's more of a special, that's more of a special district than like a rural fire protection district. And, and so they are, um, they, they are also in control of that district itself, that district itself. So, um, it's more like a service district. And there are service districts throughout the state that have the board of commissioners that are, that are in charge of the special service district, whether it be parks, solid waste, public safety. And that district is only, only, it's, it's a funding mechanism in nature, and it's only funding a portion of, and then the county is picking up the rest.
Okay, yeah, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they, uh, elect a board at the county for this new, when they passed this? Isn't there? Appointed, okay, so the commissioners appointed and then, so it sounds like ultimately the commissioners really still have control. And so that.
That's the difference.
Potentially would, could be a blueprint for something like this?
Potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions right now?
So have here just two timelines. And you can utilize these timelines, it's just a suggested timeline, even if you were to do a food and beverage tax or something along those lines. Um, just to give you an idea, if, if we were to want to put something in front of the voters, uh, from a suggested timeline standpoint, maybe you adopt a ballot title explanatory statement in June of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we go through in August twenty twenty-four, maybe there's a public PAC that's formed, um, or an ad hoc committee that's formed to help promote whatever actions council was wanting to move forward to do the vote. Uh, then you would ultimately, January twenty twenty-five, council would approve all of that as to form. February twenty-five, you would approve a resolution saying that you would be included in the district. The city could be included in the district if it was voted in. August twenty twenty-five, the commissioners would approve the ballot title explanatory statement for a November twenty twenty-five district election. Or food and beverage tax election or something along those lines. Um, to try to, to do a food and beverage tax or, or a district by November of two thousand twenty-four is probably too short of a time. Can you technically do it? Yes, but would that provide you the most, invite, the best environment for success? Likely not because of all the necessary groundwork needed to try to bring the community on board with the reasons why and the information sharing that would need to exist. And that's why, this is just an example of a time perspective. If you really wanted to implement something for voter approval, you should be looking at like sixteen, give or take, months out in advance before vote.
Questions? Dwayne?
Why is this the first time I'm hearing this, though? I mean, not that I was for this tax, but it seems like the first time we're hearing about, we should be sixteen months out. Or am I missing something? Because I was.
We've talked about before, we've talked about before, uh, the, what individuals in the field have recommended with regards to bringing something forward to a vote. Um, and that usually is at least a year process. You need at least a year advance, but it doesn't, doesn't mean we have to do it a year in advance. We can always bring things forward sooner.
I would say we haven't spent a lot of time talking about, um, the, the voter ballot route in general, right? But it, it has been mentioned, we could do it, you know, we could do it quickly and we can put it on this November. We have to meet that deadline of, uh, August, I think, is the filing deadline to get the ballot language, um, approved and on, on the ballot. But I think he's recommending if we wanted to, you know, set up the PAC and work on public information, um, to give ourselves a little bit more time there.
And then the other timeline is just in theory, in general, if you were to implement a new district or a new fee or something along those lines, that there could be a discussion. And again, this is just suggested in nature of if there was a, we've got our public safety levy in, uh, in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, five, twenty twenty-six, but if the voters did approve something in November of twenty-five, then you could look at a reduction or elimination of either levy or utility fee or something along those lines if you were creating a new revenue stream or if you were pulling a new service out of city operations into its own independent operation. And so that's what that timeline says is you, there could be a timeline. Once the fee starts being enacted here, it would go away here. So it would be a potential wash or, or small increase, not, not a drastic increase because there'd be whatever above and beyond the dollar seventy-nine that you'd be taxing.
Rick?
What would be the disadvantages or concerns if we wanted to try and do a special election in May of two thousand twenty-five? Just a shorter timeline, is that the, and there's additional cost involved with the special election?
Yeah, those are some of those, definitely.
But then if it were approved in the special election in May of two thousand twenty-five, then we could actually put it into effect the next, the coming fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, that concludes my portion of the district. So when you're done with the questions of district, then I'll, I'll ask J.C. to come up.
Questions, Brian?
Yeah, I just had one more question about, um, the leadership of a district. Is there a mechanism for the governing body to be in charge of the district? Or does it have to be kind of offloaded to a separate, uh, party? Like, you know, there's a, there's a board for, for the district. Can that board be the council?
And, and I think you probably can, although you may be limiting what the, depending on what the district is. So if you did, say, the council as a fire district and you were the district board, you would likely hinder growth of that district into unurbanized county areas. Because as they may want to annex and, and grow, uh, it may be counter to, to people wanting to vote for that growth if the city council is the board that's overseeing the fire district, but they don't have representation on the city council. So it's important to have that separation between the two if you're wanting to provide the most success for that potential growth of that future district.
Okay, thank you. So if, so if we had a district for city parks, that could be city council? If we had a, a district for city police, that could potentially be city council? Something that's like more confined to the city boundaries?
Yeah, and in looking at the ORS, it didn't, I didn't see where it said you couldn't do that. It refers to an independent district, but that may require some additional legal interpretation of the, of this, of the statute.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question just about the math. Um, let's say we were talking about the fire district here and it looks like they need, uh, just under ten million dollars, uh, according to slide four. So in order to achieve four million dollars with a permanent tax rate, I, but we only have a dollar fifty available, it doesn't, it doesn't add up.
Yeah, you'd have to, you could implement the fee at, at more than a dollar fifty, but then you would be creating compression with all the taxing districts.
And it would compress all the districts. So everybody would receive a little bit less money than they're receiving now and the new fire district would not ever get to the ten million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, what's the, has anybody done the math, I guess, on what a dollar fifty actually brings in? It's going to be slightly less than the public safety levy, so five and a half, six million?
It's about that.
Okay. Just for everyone to keep that in mind as we move forward in this.
Bill? And I, and I agree because that's, this compression thing is huge. But you also, the dollar seventy-nine, which is what we had figured originally when we were doing the fire district, was that you were wiping out the dollar seventy-nine. And then would be, at that time, it was only two dollars and three. So it was kind of a trade-off and we would have, we, we would have stayed beneath that compression rate. Now, like I said, because the need is more, that creates that problem. But that a dollar seventy-nine would be included pretty much in the cost of the fire.
If you, if you made the, the determination that the levy, the public safety levy would go away, then you could add the dollar seventy-nine and your dollar fifty to, to what your total potential opportunity is to levy on a district. Yes, so it's, would be whatever that is, three something per thousand.
Other questions? All right?
Thank you, Mayor Council.
All right, I got the new stuff for the transactional tax slash income tax. And so forgive me, I'm going to read a lot of this. A lot of this is going to come from the city of Portland's website and municipal code. So Portland's Clean Energy Surge Charge, or CES, was proposed as an example of a funding mechanism to the city. Uh, on November sixth, twenty eighteen, Portland voters adopted Dot Measure twenty-six dash two zero one, the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Initiative. On February twenty-first, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, the Portland City Council passed an ordinance implementing the CES in the Portland City Code, or PCC. So what the PCC says, uh, for the definition of a retail sale means a sale to a consumer for use or consumption and not for resale. Retail sale also includes, but is not limited to, the sale of services, including not limited to, to retail banking services. And again, there's a bunch of definitions in there. I'm just trying to pick out the high-level ones to give you guys an idea of what this does. So on the tax rate in PCC seven dot oh two dot five hundred, section F, Clean Energy Surcharge, applicable to large retailers with retail sales within the city. The following surcharge is imposed in addition to the tax established in subsection A. The proceeds from the surcharge are to support the city of Portland's Climate Action Plan and should, and shall be deposited into the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund. So continuation of this, the filing requirement for tax years beginning on or after January first, twenty twenty-three, all business within the total sales of one billion or more and Portland sales of five hundred thousand or more are reported on the combined tax return per section seven point zero two dot six eleven, shall file a form that is due at the same time as their combined tax return. So as an example, uh, a large corporation like Amazon potentially, uh, would be eligible for a large number of sales, uh, as far as their corporate sales. And then regionally or locally, they do the calculation and file based on their regional amount. they do the calculation and file based on their regional amount. So as a continuation, the imposition of surcharge and rate, large retailer shall pay 1% surcharge on retail gross revenue within the city. The surcharge is not a tax imposed directly on the purchaser. If a large retailer itemizes its costs doing business for the purchaser, these amounts are still considered retail sales, subject to the Clean Energy Surcharge. So what that's basically saying is, yes, on your invoice, you can notate that 1% is going towards the Clean Energy Surcharge. What you can't do is upsell it on the, on the invoice. I'll try and hopefully explain this. So if something costs $10,000, the 1% tax would be 100. You can't itemize that out on the invoice and charge the, the individual for 10,100, because the tax actually would be on the 10,100 that you charge to the individual business or person. The calculation of retail gross revenue, in calculating the amounts of retail gross revenue for purposes of the Clean Energy Surcharge, a deduction from the retail sales within the city is allowed for the following. The amount of the Portland Business License Tax attributable to the revenue subject to the surcharge, if any, paid to the city. B, retail sales of qualified groceries. C, retail sales of medicine or drugs. D, retail sales of qualified human care services. E, retail sales of qualified residential garbage and recycling services, and sales from the administration of qualified retirement plans. So again, they lined out certain industries that potentially were not charged. Do we have to duplicate a slide in there? The CES is due at the original due date of the City of Portland and Multnomah County Business Tax Return, which is generally April 15, which is around tax time. However, per their website, it does appear that if you are a large enough entity, that you can make quarterly payments. There are several examples on the City of Portland website, available for different scenarios and how to calculate tax. So they, they go through a mixed-use business. So you could sell pharmaceuticals that are exempt, but however, vitamins are not. And so they go through several different examples of how that is calculated. And then they also go through the definition of manufacturers and wholesalers. So if you were passing it on as a manufacturer wholesale, that someone else is going to then resale, there are forms and exemptions to take from that as well. And that's the last slide I have on that. Are there any questions that maybe I can answer?
Questions about the transactional tax? Brian?
Thanks, J.C. So if council were to show support for this idea, is it, I mean, implementation, is it, is it largely similar implementation to like a general sales tax, like as far as rolling something like that out?
Yeah, I mean, generically speaking, I would say it would be, that would be something we do not have the staff right now, and so we would probably contract that up for somebody else to, to manage for us.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks.
Other questions? No?
I guess, I don't know if it's a question, because I have been reading about it and reading that right now, in the Portland area, it has brought in a pretty good, because of their larger city, the size of their city and their businesses, it has been brought in a lot of money, and so now they're trying to, some people are trying to glump, glump onto that to be used for other than the climate energy. And they're, so there's a battle going on right now in, over that. So when they did this, they specifically put it down as a climate correct. So we didn't, you know, if we did this, we would just basically put it as a public safety, or how does that work? Do you have to, ahead of time, kind of say where it's going?
I don't know if I can answer your question, but maybe I can respond, and I think the root of your question, I think Portland formed this to combat some of the fossil fuel emissions as far as the delivery and other charges that were coming in from the outside areas and/or shipping charges out. Does that potentially have a nexus to our public safety services here? I, I don't know. Does that mean that you could still make a policy decision that would still incorporate something like this as a, a local business income tax? That's up to you guys to decide.
Okay. And also, when it was made, and this is just, when it was proposed in the very beginning, there was no, you said that the voters adopted the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Initiative, and then, so it had to be passed by the city first to be able to implement?
That's what, that's what it appears.
Okay, that's what I was just making clear, that, in other words, because I do know Portland has a lot of taxes that they have in the last five, 10 years put forward, and the people have approved them, and, you know, like the houseless, houseless tax they take in, they take in this tax, they take in, there's a preschool tax, so there's just a lot of different taxes. But they were all approved by the voters at one point in time, I believe, to be able to go forward. So that's what I was wondering, if this is also one that had to be voter-approved before it could be done?
I think it appears that way, based on their, their website. And then they had to do a subsequent adoption of what the actual ordinance was for city code, if that answers your question.
I think that answers the question. That was my question. At first, the idea was approved by the voters, and then there was the ordinance that told, said the details of how it would be done. So I, I was just clarifying that. Thank you.
J.C., does there need to be a justification similar to the transportation methodology we were using on the utility fee?
I would think that to make it legally justifiable, you're going to need to come up with the way that it would be the nexus to the service. Again, that seems a little maybe disproportionate as far as how you're getting that, but doesn't mean that it's out of the realm of the possibility. I think it also changes the discussion, too. If you change the dollar amount of sales, whether it's a billion, you drop the, the corporation total to 500 million or 5 million, you change the number of businesses within the city, too. So I'm, I'm guessing we would need to do a larger-scale analysis as far as what the City of Portland's code would look like in our economy, and then where we would scale that. The issue I think you have is there is going to potentially be an economic impact and future growth impact. So if we are regionally the only community with this kind of business income tax, you change the work of SO Ready and some other things that are trying to recruit businesses into the area.
Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when Valerie was asking about it being voter-approved, is there also the alternative that something like that could be passed by council and then, you know, like we were talking about with some of these other options?
I did not see that on their information sheet that they considered that. I can get back to you guys with some more information if that was a possibility. I know we are a home rule, and so just like the sales tax, I would expect it to be very similar.
Okay, thanks.
Joel?
So does this apply, then, to all the chain stores and grants pass? For example, McDonald's or Fred Meyer or Safeway or?
Yes, no, maybe. So again, it's the limit, right, of the sales, and then some of these aren't necessarily under the corporation umbrella. They are a franchisee of that corporation, so I don't know specifically if we could say yes, no, just by bringing up one McDonald's example.
Any other questions? Not on that one at the moment. Reserve policy.
All right, so moving along to the General Fund Reserve Financial Policy. The city will maintain adequate fund balances to meet seasonal cash flows, support a good credit rating, to have resources to meet emergency or unanticipated expenses, and to have sufficient resources to begin the next fiscal year. The budget shall provide an appropriate beginning/ending fund balance, and that comes straight from the policy. And as a reminder, an adequate fund balance should be sufficient to provide for any anticipated cyclical variations in revenues and expenditures, and provide working capital for ongoing operations for a period of at least 120 days. In the General Fund, because of the cyclical nature of property taxes, the majority of, of which are not received until November, the targeted beginning fund balance should be between 30 and 40% of the budget's annual expenditures. The fund balance shall be exclusive of all reserves, not anticipated to be readily available for the use in emergencies and contingencies. And approximately November 1 is 33% of the way through the fiscal year. And so again, the General Fund does float that money until our large property tax rolls come in. Some of the other caveats, generally, the fund balance levels are dedicated by cash flow requirements to support operating expenses, relative rate stability from year to year for enterprise funds, susceptibility to emergency or unanticipated expenditures, credit worthiness and capacity to support debt service requirements, legal or regulatory requirements affecting revenues, disbursements, and fund balances, reliability of outside revenues. And just generically, our, our financial reserve policy does show financial strength with credit score to lending institutions. And so back in 2018, we did have a credit rating done, and the city is very high, has a double A. The use of the reserve balances are one-time monies, and a rough estimate each percent is about 300,000. And I know the conversation has come up before about moving it from 30 cents to, or 30% to 25%. Generically speaking, every new revenue for a 30% fund balance policy, we can only spend 77 cents of that dollar to meet that 30% fund balance policy. With a 25% fund balance policy, you're looking at 80 cents per dollar. So there is a little bit of a lasting impact by lowering it potentially by about 3%. And I'll take any questions regarding the fund balance policy.
Valerie?
Yeah, I have a question. With moving and going towards having the utility fee, that is not a tax per se, whatever, it seems to me that that is another revenue source that does not go on the cycle that the, the taxes for property taxes. So how does that affect the end-of-year budget? Because you say 33% by November, you know, we need that in reserves to make it, and we're saying, well, that's based upon our, our levy and property taxes, because we collect those at the same time. Now that we're shifting and now we have money coming from a utility fee, does that buffer that a little bit, or?
It does, it's going to smooth it out, but the impact is getting greater and greater as far as that talks, that tax roll in November. And so a third of the way, you're getting about an extra $1.2 million, kind of sustain the General Fund. And as you kind of saw earlier in Aaron's part of the presentation, public safety is well above that, and they will spend more than that in any given month.
Rick?
So J.C., when, if you go back to slide, slide number 40, just your gut feeling, when we talk about the reserve and how much of it, actually, think one more, go the other That's it. So the money is there to provide transition of the fund that sits there each calendar year or fiscal year, either way. Do you use 50% or 90% or 100% of that money that's in that reserve during that transition? Or is a lot of it still left there because it's not needed?
So generically speaking, because of the seasonality of property tax, we use about 30% up until that November time period. Now, do we still have some left over? Probably a little bit, yes. But generically speaking, we, we kind of spend it down to, it's almost a zero level, just by math.
So consequently, if we change the 30, 40% range to 25%, we're not going to have enough to cover?
Yeah, so that is a good question, and so other cities do get by with a 5, 10, 15% fund balance policy, which I think is where you're going with the question.
Right.
There is no legal restriction for the General Fund to be negative in the middle of the year. It just can't end the year in, with a negative balance. So those communities actually go negative in the, in the General Fund, and everybody else kind of checkbook-wise floats them for a couple of months until they get to November.
And I know some organizations actually have to go to a bank and, and take out a loan during that transition period. We would not be forced to do that ourselves, because you said we would just rearrange some of, float the funds?
Yeah, more or less. Again, the financial reporting requirement is as of June 30, 2023, so it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily take an exact pinpoint of the balance as of October 31, right before property taxes come in.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you. Didn't we already change the reserve fund parameters to 28 to 38%?
Yeah, me and, me and Aaron talked about this, too. The, the conversation seemed to be more towards a temporary relief as a one-time to make ends meet as far as last year's budget. So we think that the, in the guise of the conversation, the 30% is probably where you still wanted to sit as far as policy.
Okay, so, so it sounds like for this budget year, we're paying back that 2%. So we actually have an additional $600,000 in the budget to get back to that 30%?
If you wanted to lower it down, that was part of the calculation as far as the utility fee to get us to about a 30%.
I'm not quite sure I caught that.
So the calculation for the 3.3, the 3.4 million dollars as far as the utility fee revenue was enough of the room to, yes, pay that back, to get us back to that 30% fund balance policy.
Okay, thanks.
Rick?
Do I remember a calculation for 2023 of ending that fund balance of 42%? Is that?
That is correct, and the previous year, we started with 44%, and we had to cut down to 28 to meet that. So again, we are set up to spend more than we bring in.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No more questions at the moment? Well, the overarching, I guess, decision before us, we did have a, a recent motion to move forward with the food and beverage tax on the November ballot, and I think it was seven to one council vote to move in that direction. And, and within about one week, I started hearing lots of other brainstorming ideas. So that's why we have kind of this mishmash presentation today of different ideas. And if, if you want more information on one of those ideas, or if you want to make steps to move forward with one of those, we need to hear about it. Valerie?
Well, I will tell you that I am still standing strong in my wanting to have a round table. I don't feel qualified. I mean, I've read a lot, and I, I appreciate Tom Bradbeer's input. I appreciate J. Meredith's input that are giving some, some different ideas. And speaking with some of the people who've talked about wanting to be on the round table, they've had some questions that I don't think have ever been answered. And especially, you know, and all of our frustration is every time we come forward, there's still more money needed. So it just kind of feels like it doesn't matter where we go, we're always needing more. And so I think there's just kind of this idea out there that, you know, when is this ever going to stop? That just need, you know, need, need, need. And I, I, that's the kind of feeling that I get out there, is just like, where does this stop? So I really think it's time to take a deep breath, sit down with the options that we've heard about, have a round table about it, take a look, and have some of the questions that I keep getting asked. An example, one of them that I don't think we've ever had answered is, can we take a look at other communities and what the cost, what their costs for their police and fire and the resource they have? I mean, I'm always told, well, we're apples and oranges, but the truth of the matter is, I hear that all the time. People really want to know. And I don't, I think by just saying, well, we can't use those comparatives, is kind of just once more not being honest with everybody. So I, I think it's really important that is, that this time, we have all this in front of us, we know the battle that we're going to be under for to be under for the restaurant tax. I know the battle that that's upon us. And I just think we need to open it up and have an honest, down-to-earth talk with all the people, have fire, police, JC, whatever, in a roundtable to talk about it. So, whatever we choose, we have the support to move forward with it. Because I think if we're just the eight of us, I don't think, you know, just from my history, and it kind of concerns me a little bit, Brian, when you keep saying, well, can we do something without having to go to the public? I think that's our biggest mistake is to think that we are the ones that can make this decision for any district. Because I think that's where people are scared is that us eight people are making these huge decisions without more input from the community. So, I think we need to take a breath and do a roundtable and really get input from important leaders in our community to know what they may support after they've heard all the facts.
Can you just please elaborate more, I guess, on the vision of the roundtable? Who's participating? How's it structured?
Okay, well, I look at roundtable. Obviously, I want the chief of police to be there to be able to tell the story that we've heard about the needs and the morale and the amount of time it takes to training and all those. As to hearing the same thing, having the fire there represented to tell their story, to have the information to compare what are the police costs in other communities with ours. I know it's kind of hard to pick out because things are different in different cities, and I've started to realize that. But then have, you know, I can think of myself going to governor affairs. You know, I know governor affairs, I think Josh Baylock, who's on our budget committee, I think he's still on there. I don't know. I can't remember because it was hard to tell the other day. But Josh Baylock is on the committee, Kelsey, I mean, Lasky, Kate Lasky's on that committee. And they just ask, and they have really good questions, and they want to be a part of it. And that's part of Chamber of Commerce. They need to be a part of it because anything we do, we're going to want their support behind us. I go to Business Retention and Expansion, Lowell Gibson, who runs Nice Badge, you know, he has volunteered. I go to the CED, Community Economic Development Commission, and I know Brad Converse has had some good questions. And so, a lot of these committees, who are really active people in our community, would like to come to the table and ask their questions.
So...
And so, those, I look at a roundtable as just that, as just a roundtable of those people here with the police and fire. If they want to send in their questions ahead of time, that's okay, too, kind of like we've done before. But have a conversation and have their questions legitimately answered.
So, I guess what I'm hearing, though, are questions about the need rather than questions about the funding mechanisms?
Well, I think if you're going to talk about funding, you have to talk about the need. I think that's the problem is that need puts forth, they're not willing to support something unless they're convinced that we really need it. And, you know, if you listen to Tom Bradbeer's and Jay's, what we're hearing out there is that, well, you know, we can do more than you think we can do. So, it's just kind of like, you know, I just think it needs to be brought out and talked about. It needs to be substantiated that, yes, we need these things because of this. I can't do that as one person. And I've tried. I've tried for many, many years. And it just doesn't cut it. It needs to be more of a discussion that comes from the city with them in the room. So, I don't have to run over to, you know, this person and ask, and then this person and ask, and this person and ask. I'd like to have everybody in the same room. So, the questions that come about from them, they'll have a follow-up question to clarify in their mind. And so, that's what I think we need to do. I think that, you know, just us sitting up here saying that, you know, okay, this is what we need, and so, we're going to give this funding up without them truly understanding the need. I don't think they can understand the need.
So, I guess I'm just trying to picture how you would, you know, is this a public meeting? Is it, who's sitting on the dais? Who's asking questions? Who's answering questions?
Well, I guess my idea as a roundtable is that nobody's per se sitting on the dais. I think we've had it before where you basically have it, everybody's kind of on the same level in a room. And basically, I think Aaron's facilitated them. I've been to them in this room before where, you know, there were some questions that was put forth, the finance department was there, the police and the fire were there, you know, ahead of times. It's always nice to get questions because that gives our staff time to know what they're going to be, you know, hit with, so they can kind of come up with those answers. But yes, it's more of a facilitated to where nobody's necessarily on a dais. It comes down to the same thing. We're all kind of on the same level, talking business and talking about this is the needs of the city. This is where we're at. Give us some ideas as to what, questions that you have about, you know, and those could come in ahead of time. What questions do you have? They could answer them. And then, if they have more questions, you let them answer them, ask those.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Okay, so, as far as, you know, my memory, what Valerie just mentioned, we've done the exact thing in two different forms. We had a roundtable where everyone sat at the same level, and we invited certain people, et cetera, et cetera. Certain questions were asked and answered. Then we did it in a little bit different structure where there was people on the dais and there was people in the audience. We did that exact, that exact thing already. Now, I'm not necessarily against taking another six months a year and doing the exact thing again to give maybe slightly different people a chance to ask questions now that people have actually maybe woken up and realized, oh, my goodness, maybe we do need more money. But we have done that exact thing twice. So, I wouldn't be against, I wouldn't, you know, judge anybody harshly who would be against that because we did it, you know, in two different ways. But for whatever reason, we're going to give, I guess, a different group of people now more of a chance to ask questions. That could turn out to be positive, I suppose. You know, one thing that I just like the council to remember or maybe never knew, you know, one of the people that Valerie had mentioned to, you know, inviting or who seemed to be interested in such a process, you know, sent out a letter to all the restaurant and lodging owners in the city. And I quote, it says, "We need your support to continue our efforts to fight against even more tax and fee schemes." So, it would make no difference what that person hears. They're going to fight against tax and fee schemes, as they call it, any funding source. So, you know, it makes me a little reluctant to invite. And that person actually was at one of the forums already. But he's going to fight against schemes no matter what. So, you know, I'm okay with having yet another forum to allow yet more people to come up with more pertinent questions. But we have done it. If we want to do it again, you know, I wouldn't be against it. But for whatever reason, you know, some councils feel that counselors and leaders act and other people keep taking input. We already got that input. I'd be willing to do it again. Maybe we'd get a little more, a little better input this time. But we have done it for sure.
Other discussion on possible roundtable and/or if we want to move forward on any of these options? Brian?
I don't think it's a good use of our time to have another roundtable. I think that we've been talking about this for years. And, you know, stakeholders in the community have had plenty of opportunities to participate and to ask questions and to be a part of the conversation. So, asking for yet another roundtable honestly just seems like kicking the can down the road and not taking decisive action by council. Council needs to take action, one way or another. Otherwise, we're just going to keep talking about this forever. You know, we can have roundtables until twenty thirty or longer. So, you know, the questions they have, they can, they can, they can get answers to those questions. They can do the research themselves and get the answers. If they want to do a comparison with other communities, I've done that on my own. It's not hard to do. The budgets are public, you know, all that information's public. If people want those answers, they don't need to be spoon-fed. They can do a little legwork themselves. It's not our job to make sure every single person has every piece of information. They need to have a little bit of skin in the game if they want to be a part of the conversation. So, I think having another forum or roundtable is not a good use of our time. I think the timeline is important, and it's been getting pushed and pushed and pushed, and it continues to get pushed. So, I'm not in favor of a forum. I'm in favor of taking some action, whatever that may be.
Do you have a suggestion?
Not yet.
All right. Rob?
So, I have a question, so, for maybe JC or for anybody, I guess. So, the transactional fee or tax or whatever that we were talking about today, essentially, bottom line, it's a sales tax that would be basically on big box stores. Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
Yes. I would say that there could be some regionality to that, too, depending on what the level of the code may say. So, you could potentially bring in Dutch Bros and/or Mastercraft cabinets, or is that correct? Master brand cabinets into the discussion depending on what their sales are, too.
Well, like Master Brand, as far as, they don't, they don't, they don't retail, right? It's for, isn't basically for resale, but I could be wrong about that.
Again, I haven't looked into it as far as what their actual sales are and if they do have a wholesaler. But I would guess some of it is some large-scale retail.
Thank you.
I mean, I think my understanding of what you presented earlier is that if we're comparing what Portland had done, which was climate improvements, and they were basing it on the largest companies, both, you know, so that perhaps what they're, we're trying to offset was either manufacturing kind of environmental outputs or the Amazon delivery-type outputs. And so, we would need to justify how our transactional tax would relate to public safety. And off the top of my head, Master Brand's, you know, need for public safety is probably not any different, maybe particularly than a very small business in this town. Does that, along the lines of what you were mentioning earlier? I mean, am I following?
No, you're definitely on the right track. So, in one of my conversations with HDL, too, maybe this is just starting, you know, a similar idea down a different path. So, as a extension of our business occupancy tax, we could bolster that code potentially to be our own city income tax on those businesses that operate in the city. I don't know if that was ever felt as a high-tempered area that the council wanted to go previously. But that's kind of what you're talking about, right? So, you're talking about an income tax within the city limits and potentially setting those restrictions, just like you would set a food and beverage or retail sales tax on what is potentially exempt and not exempt.
Just off the top of my head here, I guess, as far as where I see a lot of safety calls happening, convenience stores, grocery stores. If we're exempting grocery items, we might actually not be, this tax might not be relatable to some of the businesses that are seeing the most in terms of theft or other sorts of calls. So, something to think about. Valerie?
Yeah, I was just going to add. I think that's why I think you get this feeling out there or the senses that we're on a money grab. We're just kind of looking for any way to grab money anywhere because we need money. And I get that. But that brings it back down to, you know, people support it. You know, people support, even Portland, who has outrageous taxes, if they see something coming of them and they really feel that, yes, I get it, I know why we need it, they'll support it. But if they're not feeling, and we've got a couple of voices out there that are pretty loud in the community saying, well, you don't really need as much as you're saying you're needing. I just want everybody in the same room to have that discussion. Because, you know, three minutes at the speaking just doesn't cut a discussion. To just go up and say your presentation where you have three minutes and you go away, whatever, it's not a back-and-forth situation. So, I like the idea of a back-and-forth situation so that we can vet through these other ideas that are coming up. You know, and without really doing that, I just, I don't feel I can move forward. And so, that's why I said a roundtable to me, you know, you're right, we've done all these forums and done these things, and I get it. But one thing I've said all along until you say this, the word tax, nobody's paying attention. And so, now we've said it. And so, now we are looking for those sources. So, now everybody's paying attention. You either seize the moment and open it up and say, okay, this is a community conversation that needs to happen, or you are accused of being on a money grab. So, that's where I'm trying to get beyond is say, let's have that community conversation. And hopefully, we can let them know where we're at, why we need it, and yes. And so, then you have them on your side because they understand it. And they don't think that you're just out there looking for any way, you know, maybe flying by that might be able to drop money on our lap.
Brian?
So, I guess, thinking about moving forward, Valerie's right, you know, when we start using the word tax, people start paying attention more. The other way we could get people to start paying attention more is by taking action and implementing something. People will pay attention to that, too. And some will appreciate it and some won't. And it may even go to referendum, or it may not. We don't know. So, that's the other mechanism to get people to pay attention because we all know that, you know, public information campaigns at this level are difficult. No matter how much effort we put into them, only a small percentage of people actually pay attention. So, I would still be in favor of considering enacting something at the council level and putting the onus on whoever might want to not have that go into effect to get signatures for referendum. Because that will show everybody that this is a serious problem. That will show everyone that we are not trying to do a money grab, that we actually, you know, do need this funding to sustain the level of service for police and fire, which is true, regardless of what any former finance director might say. He's one individual who has been removed from this administration for a fairly long time. And, you know, some decisions that this city made partially under his watch were not that great. So, I don't give as much weight to his opinion as maybe some other counselors do. So, I would be in favor of potentially looking at enacting three percent food and beverage tax. Not so much in favor of looking at a special district. I think that's, I don't think that has as high a chance of success. I would be in favor of maybe looking into the transactional tax more. I don't think we have totally enough information at this point for me to be green-lighting that because I don't know that we even have justification for how that would work. But I would be interested in maybe figuring out how that could work. So, I'd also be in favor of reducing the reserve financial policy to twenty-five percent.
Joel?
One of the things I think that hurts our effort is, regardless of what we do, and I certainly understand what everyone is saying because we've said it many times. When the former finance director comes out against things, it's not what I think, it's what the community thinks because they're the ones that are voting. And that is going either unchallenged or unheard or heard and supported. And if the community forum was going to be effective, it has to be an effective way to address that conflict in a positive manner. Because conflicts aren't negative. They don't need to be negative. And we've had active listening sessions before where people present their point of view in front of a forum, and other people disagree with that and present it. And they're informed people. They're not dumb people. They, in terms of council, I'm not saying that I have any more information than either side would have on that. And that would be one benefit of the forum, I think, to address that conflict directly. Because if we don't, I don't think it makes any difference what we do. And it's not that I don't think anybody likes that, but I think that's the situation we find ourselves in. And the only way I know how to resolve it is to address it directly. And a community forum, if you set it up properly, would do that.
Vanessa?
I can really appreciate the idea that a roundtable...
I can really appreciate the idea that a roundtable might appease concerns that the community has, but I'm afraid that's always going to exist when you talk about raising revenues in the tax base. We've been talking about public safety going on four years now, and we're still hearing from people that are really involved in our community and that pay close attention to our business. They still don't see the need, we're hearing that today, which is exactly why I voted no on the motion to put the food and beverage tax to the ballot. I am concerned that regardless of how many roundtables we hold, regardless of the dozens of meetings that we've had on this topic, that people still are, it's going to be an endless game of whack-a-mole with the questions. There, we cannot make everybody happy, unfortunately. So I'm concerned that a roundtable just stalls the inevitable, which is hopefully this council making a decision sooner than later on how to move forward. To segue into that, I do have concerns of the taxing district. I'm afraid in the future, I think that whatever we decide, I think we really need to be looking five, 10, 15 years down the road. I know we don't have a crystal ball, but we need, I really would like this council to consider something that grows with the CPI. I'm concerned that another taxing district would get us to a place eventually where we need a levy and we need additional supplemental income to support that. So I don't support moving forward in that direction. I don't think I know enough about the large retailer tax to say one way or the other today. I do have concerns that maybe the nexus can't quite possibly be connected as nicely to public safety services as the model in Portland. And I still do think that the food and beverage tax is the most equitable option that we have at our disposal. So I'd like the council to start talking about solutions moving forward rather than talking about talking.
Rob?
So if we were gonna have more public discussion on funding mechanisms, what kind of timeframe are we, are we talking about? Are we just gonna schedule something to happen in, you know, three months? Are we gonna schedule something to happen in one month? What kind of timeframe are we gonna give the, the last outlying people who have not been paying close enough attention yet to, to essentially ask their questions and get up to speed and make a decision whether they're gonna support it, public safety or not? For me, if that could be done in some relatively short timeframe, you know, I would support it. And again, give the, the last outlying people another chance to decide if they feel they want to support public safety. But if we do it quickly, relatively efficiently, you know, I'd be for it. And then we could move on finally, and still have time to put something on the November ballot.
Valerie? Yeah, I actually would like to have it before budget happens, because to me, a lot of this has to do with, you know, as we move forward budget-wise, to have it set in my mind, so I would prefer to have it sometime this month. Brian?
I've heard myself and Counselor Ogier speak about the options presented today, and no other counselor has given their opinion on where we should go. There's just been talk about the roundtable, which is, you know, delaying the inevitable decision. But it would be really nice for staff, for the public, for other counselors to hear what counselors think about these options, because we're not gonna base our decision on whatever comes out of that roundtable. You know, that's one data point of 100. So I would really be interested, and I think everyone would really be interested in knowing where counselors stand right now on these options.
Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So on the taxing district, I have the same concerns that Vanessa had. It might be two years ago now, I remember asking and receiving information from the old finance director, Adam, talking about how there was at least two, two fire districts up north that now needed levies, you know, 10 years later. So the fact that that may not grow, may not necessarily actually solve our problem, it just, I don't know, it's almost like an exercise in futility. So I don't know that a fire district makes any more sense than what we have right now. As far as the, the, you know, the tax that we're talking about, potential tax, I mean, the, the old adage slash joke, the only fair tax is taxing someone else. If we could find a way to essentially tax big-box stores that are headquartered somewhere far away, gee, everyone in Grants Pass should be relatively happy about that, or many people, anyway. It still does affect the overall shopping scene, the overall shopping landscape, and would people necessarily still drive to other cities to shop? But, but again, if we could find a way to tax businesses that weren't owned in Grants Pass, and I know it may be even foolish for me to even say that now, because maybe this exact quote could be used later in a lawsuit. But, you know, there's a real, there's a real, we'll say, beauty to that, if that's possible and it could be done legally. No local business, no local owners are necessarily harmed, as a matter of fact, many of them may be actually helped by a tax like that, be more competitive with the big boxes. So I really like the possibilities there, and I'd like to hear more about that, again, because we'd be taxing people that, you know, business owners that don't, don't live in our area. As far as the food and beverage tax, that also has, you know, just, I mean, this past Saturday night, I ate over in Ashland, four people, the bill was sizable. I actually went to tip on the bottom line, skipping over the tax line, I completely forgot about the tax. We're out having a good time, we have a glass of wine, having, you know, socializing, I mean, I didn't even think of the tax, you know? And I, and it's not because I'm richer than, you know, many people in Grants Pass, it's just that's, you know, the bottom line was the bottom line, we paid it, and we'll go back to that restaurant because we liked it. So the food and beverage tax, to me, is still a really, a really valid choice. And the, the big box, as I'll say, the big box tax has a real beauty to it as well. So those are the two that, that would, I'd be interested, most, most interested in.
Dwayne?
This is not an easy answer, I don't think any way you go. I just, I've been writing some notes here, because I'm looking around and going, well, in nine months, it could be a whole total different council here, you know, this election year. And it's not that the food and beverage tax wouldn't do good, I'm worried that the efforts we put forward would be wasted time because the opposition to it. You know, I've listened to party leaders and their people say no, I've listened to the Chamber of Commerce say no. So I'm like, well, we're gonna go down this road and get a no for us already? You know, and it's not, not the taxes don't work, I, I honestly, if you really wanna look at it, I mean, a sales tax of the whole state and got rid of property tax would be great, or income tax or something. But the voters don't like that, so what do you do when the voters keep telling you no? We work for the people, so if the people tell us no, what do you do? Because they're the ones that put us here, and I have to listen to the people. So it's not that these other things might make sense or not make sense, it's just, what are the constituents telling us that we should be doing? And obviously, a lot of times, they're just misinformed, and I, and I agree with that, probably most of us. I prefer not to hit our local businesses, that's, that's really fearful for me. I drive around town, there's a lot of closed doors, empty buildings, and I don't hear anybody coming here to expand. We pay for so ready, and I'm a little, I don't even know if so ready's really working for us, because I don't see new businesses coming here, which is the growth of our city and county. So I don't want to put anything that's gonna hinder the growth of our economy here. So those are my fears, and I know I didn't really give you the perfect answer yet, but that's how I'm weighing my, these things out here, is how do we grow without hurting our economy because we're already hurting? And I think sometimes we do a lot of things that counter what we want to do. And if you, if the council wants to put a tax on there, I have a feeling it's gonna fail, but obviously, I'm, the council as a whole will have to go forward with, that's their decision. And as a whole, you have to take the brunt with all of it. We're all, even though we might vote no or yes, we're all gonna be responsible for the actions of the council's vote to put it on the ballot. If the majority goes that way, I guess I'm part of that majority, even though I might be in disagreement with it. I just don't think it's the best decision, but I see why the decision would be made, I see why people like it. It's just not a really good decision, and none of this is really, honestly, fun to talk about. It's such a horrible thing. And, and I'm gonna go back to the, most of these causes are not causes that the city did, I will defend that part. These causes are coming from way above the, the city did not cause inflation, the city didn't cause wages to go up, the city didn't cause, you know, the, the cost of things. So I hope people understand that, it's not the city's fault, it's actually higher than the city that's caused these problems. And I hope that we can look at those, why it's costing so much to live. That's the root of a lot of things, is the cost. It's the policies that are causing these things. So I know I didn't give a great answer again, but this is some of my thoughts in my head of where I'm at, so.
I think one of the maybe first questions we need to address is, is the council still interested in moving forward with putting something on the ballot in November right now?
Rob?
I mean, right now, I would be, if we're gonna have a forum and have discussion, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna say that I couldn't change my opinion based on some intelligent realizations or comments that come out of the forum. So if we're gonna have a forum, I don't know that we need to necessarily answer that question today. It would almost, it would almost basically be an insult to anyone who comes to the forum in a sense, to answer that today.
Let me, let me put it this way, because I was going to ask next about the food and beverage, about the forum. You can decide that you're moving forward with the food and beverage tax in November and then hold a forum, right? And the forum could both address some of the needs and, and whether or not there is a need or the size of the need that, that Valerie talked about earlier, as well as being informational about the food and beverage tax. Or you can not decide, not decide at this point to do a food and beverage tax in November and have a roundtable on just the, the size of the need and, and not particularly have a solution on the table. Or we can not do either one of those things, but I think we have to get some, some direction here and, you know, otherwise, you know, we could have a forum on, on anything, we can have lots of forums, you know, but what would it be on? I'm hearing, you know, some people think we've had plenty of forums, some people think we need to have more forums. You voted seven to one to move forward, you know, with putting this on the, on the ballot in November, and then I, like I said earlier, I mean, I just immediately started hearing people talking about other solutions. Now we're even talking about, you know, basically convincing some of our other community leaders about whether or not there's a need for any other supplemental funding. So, you know, where are we at? Do you, are you convinced there's a need for additional funding? I mean, we, we need to make a decision. If, if you're not yet convinced, then we need to have a, a roundtable or another workshop and get us to a point where we're either convinced that we need to talk about this some more, or convinced that we can just let it go and we'll stick with the funding we've got, and we'll move forward. But we, we do need you to make some decisions, and I can't make those decisions for you. Brian?
Well, first, I, I'm not 100% sure that that vote was seven to one, because I think I voted no on that, and then Counselor Ogier also said she voted no on that, but that's besides the point. I do see a considerable lack of leadership on the dais right now. I see veteran counselors not giving clear opinions on where we should go. Even Dwayne, that was quite the non-answer. I've given my position with regards to the funding options. I think putting anything on the November ballot is a waste of time. I don't think anything we put on there is gonna pass, so I am against putting any of those on the November ballot. Given, given the, the need that we have, that I thought we all understood was a very real need, and maybe it's slightly less, less so now that we have the utility fee, but looking at these numbers we just got, maybe it's not. So I'm still processing that piece of it, but council has the authority in the charter to enact something, and if the public doesn't like it, they can send it to referendum. The voters have given us the authority to put something in place. I feel this situation calls for us to put something in place, and if the public, for whatever reason, thinks we're not representing them well and we're not representing their interests, they have a mechanism to have that go to referendum. So I'm in favor of sending something or to enact something, whether that's a food and beverage, whether that's transactional, big-box, whatever tax you wanna call it, that's where I think we should go. I don't think putting something on in November, I think it's gonna be a waste of everybody's time.
Dwayne?
I would agree with Brian, I think the fall is a horrible time to put something on. Just look at the big picture of what's on the ballot during that time, and the time committed to get people around supporting something's not gonna be there. I have a feeling this year is gonna be very, it's gonna be a pretty hot year. I could, I see a lot of it, I'm obviously in, in it, so I understand, and, but moving forward, if, if this is what the council wants to do, and we need to start working at the process of, if this is the tax they're gonna put up, start working that process so we can actually sell something properly to the public and show people how it's gonna work. Like I said, I'm not saying I'm agreeing, but that's what we have to do, we have to convince people to, to buy in. If they're not gonna buy in, we're wasting time on something. You gotta have buy-in, we got people to vote for something. And if you can't sell it to them, it's not gonna work. And I don't wanna go down the road of wasting a lot of time for something that people are not gonna vote for. So we have to all be committed, or mostly committed, to moving something forward, and if it's the tax, then, you know, and I told them I'd be here until the end of the year, and that's what I'll do, I'll be here and, and I'll be informing people on the, I mean, my biggest thing is, I want people to understand that we have to do something. If we don't do something, go ahead and help us hand out the pink slips, because that's what's gonna happen, we're gonna have to get rid of some people. So you either come along with us with this, this painful thing we have to do, because no one wants to ask for more money, I hate asking people for money. I'm telling you right now, when they have to do those little things for your kids and go out and ask for money, I absolutely hate it, it feels like I'm begging to sponsor my kid, I've always hated those things. I don't like asking people to borrow, get money from them, to take from their pockets, so we have to have people agreeing with us and come alongside us and say, yes, there is a need, and if we're gonna do it, we need to start today, making people know we need a need. I think some people have come along. Look at the county, they passed something for the first time in over 12 years, they passed something that's gonna move forward. It's probably not gonna be as good as they thought it was gonna be, but they did pass something that's gonna move forward in a, in a positive way, hopefully, so.
Valerie? Well, I, and I agree with you, which is exactly why, because right now, we have two group, two, the people that passed that county tax, it was not the commissioners, it was the people in the community, it was the Colleen Martins, it was the people who work on these committees that recognized the need, it really affected them, and so they went to work to pass it. And that's what I'm trying to generate, that same energy that says, okay, your city has a need too, a big need, and you're right, I can't sell it until those voices that are out there now saying, well, you know, you just did this, are convinced. And I think, you know, we did just put $12 on the- And I think, you know, we did just put $12 on the, so there's going to be some rude awakenings here in a month or two when those people get their bills, because I've been getting people questioning the bills before, and I have to say, well, you think it's bad, it's going to get worse. So, you know, this is just the reality, is this is where we are. I took my, I have, I visited two of my, three of my siblings up in Salem and Corvallis this last week, and I have a copy of their water bill. And I can tell you that $12 fee is nothing compared to Corvallis. There's this 13 for police and another 14 for fire. So, I mean, I have the evidence that says, you're right, this is a travesty, but this is a travesty and something the entire state is dealing with. And yes, there's got to be a time when our legislature figures out this property tax system is not working. I think everybody in this state knows that. So I can't imagine, that's why when I look at five years out, it's just like, if this, if our legislature does not do something by five years out, we've really got a problem. Because I hear it over and over around the state, this property, this property is not working anymore. Because they're all compressed. I mean, we're not compressed. We're one of the very few counties that's not compressed. So that's my point. That's a point I'm trying to make, is let's put it out there on the table. Let's have the Tom Bradbeers, let's have the Jay Merediths, let's have those other people that are rollers, doers in our community, and have the conversation, so that the conversation is out there. So then, we show the need and we let them know, this is real. And we factored in the $12. So we have that information and have an idea of how much that brings in, and yet, the need that we still have. Then I think you can get those people to start moving forward and saying, okay, then I'll go out there and sell it. I have run many a PAC in this community in the last nine years, and I know the energy that's involved in getting out there and doing, doing that. But I don't want to go up there, put myself in there if I know I don't have the support of our community members, because it's a lot of work. But I'll do it if I have backing. And that's what I want to build, is I want to build the backing. And if we can't do that, then maybe that says something's wrong, that maybe we don't need it. If we can't convince them, from our city staff, of being able to say, this is what is there, this is what we have, this is what these things bring in, maybe, maybe we don't need to put anything on the ballot. Maybe they'll convince us otherwise. But I need to have that conversation before I can stand behind something. Because I will stand behind something if I truly believe in it. But when I have other people that I have respect for and have worked with, and they have different ideas, I think we need to open it up to a conversation across the table.
All right. I'm going to ask you all two questions, maybe just one, but we're going to start off with November food and beverage tax. If you are at this time wanting to move forward with, moving forward with putting the food and beverage tax on the November ballot, I have Dwayne you down as a no. Valerie?
Not without a forum.
Rob?
Same answer as Valerie.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
I'm supportive of the forum before that. Thank you.
Forgot to tell you guys all what the second question is. Joel, go ahead.
I've been real quiet, listening to everybody, and it's been, been good. I'm not sure today is the day, and I know that everybody's pointed towards the November ballot. I'm not sure today is the day to make that decision. The reason I say that, we, we have made some progress. We put the $12 fee on. We have our budget meetings coming up in May. We're going to show what that looks like with, with those, with that water fee, what the impacts of that are on our city budget. And as we move forward then, we, we need to, I think, have a forum, and then we need to make, make this decision that we're making today. If I had to choose one, and we needed to have additional revenue beyond what we already have, the, the food and beverage tax seems like a viable option, except that right now, it's not socially acceptable, it probably wouldn't be voted on regardless of, of what we feel. And the other thing is, I don't know, maybe it's a pet peeve of mine, I, I don't feel the need to sell the public on anything. I just need to be open and honest and transparent with them, because they're smart and they can make up their own minds. And they, they like public safety, and they support public safety, and they don't need me to, to sell them that this is good for you, if in fact, that's a good way to go. And so I, I think that's kind of an arrogant, on my part, not anybody else's, but arrogant viewpoint of my interaction with the people that vote.
And Brian, I have you down as a no on putting it on the November ballot at this time?
Correct.
DJ?
Nope.
Okay. So at this time, we're not prepared to do that. Who wants to move forward with Valerie's idea of a roundtable where we would look at the need, compare our costs to other communities, and have a roundtable discussion, just really about the need to maintain our level of service and, and the financial need? And it wouldn't be particularly tied to a funding solution. It's really more about addressing the need. Dwayne, go ahead. Yes or no?
Can I add to it, though? Just shortly. If we're going to do that, I would like to bring, you know, party leaders involved too, because they are leaders of their party, Democratic Party, Republican Party, there's other leaders, because they need to go back and talk to their people about this stuff. So I prefer, if we're going to do this, that we bring those people in too. If it's, you know, Chamber of Commerce party, or whatever these groups are, we need to bring some of these big groups in. So I would be for that, as long as we're inviting those people to come in.
Okay. And I've found down as a yes. Rob?
Yes.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Brian?
So to clarify, the, the forum would be about the need?
Yes. Addressing whether we need more money for public safety.
So I would assume, and then we would probably, someone would probably have an ask for another forum regarding the solutions? Is that would be next, I'm guessing? Or are we all going to do it all once?
I think it will just, evolve. I think that's the evolution, is if you've discerned that there is a need, and then you talk about what has been presented so far, and get their thoughts about what they would support.
I, I see this as a never-ending need, so I'm going to vote no.
DJ?
Well, it's clear to me that this council doesn't have a pulse on that from the community. That's, that's what I'm hearing, you know? And hearing other things, for varications amongst these many things, is I'm hearing the council doesn't have a pulse on what the community needs and what they want. The big question, how are we ever going to be able to determine what they need and what's good for this community and how to solve that problem? We as a council can't solve that. So regardless of having so many other forums and these other kinds of different things, whatever this council needs to do, have a feed on what the need in the community is, we need to do that. And it sounded like we need a forum, so therefore, yes.
All right. So it sounds like we are in support of having a roundtable-type forum and getting some community leaders from different, different places involved in this conversation and learning more. So I think everybody needs to put together some questions you have. Valerie did mention to look at the costs of other communities. We're going to need to have some good financial information from our police and fire about how much things cost and about how much staff they need, and we'll compare that to other communities and, and have a forum and quite a step back from where we've been, but we'll take the next step forward.
Yeah, Mayor, you're spot on. Thank you for facilitating that. And to add to what the mayor was saying, if there's specific questions, please forward them to me, but also, please forward to me who you think needs to be sitting at that roundtable discussion, because it's going to be a roundtable, it's not going to be a learning and listening session according, from what I'm hearing. We will be inviting specific individuals or representatives of, of organizations to sit at the table to have this discussion.
Rob?
I think that that's clear to, I think it's good, good advice to be clear as to who would essentially be participating. I also think that, that room needs to be open to the public as well, even though they can't have the expectation of, of, you know, essentially getting the microphone. The other thing too is, I know that we wouldn't even really be discussing the food and beverage tax if council hadn't pushed staff to get those figures. I also would like to know the possibilities of the legalities of, we'll call it the big box tax, before we go to our forum, because I don't want to have that as something that we're not able to discuss, because that could be attractive to a lot of people. So we need to have that information there as well.
Is there enough council interest in gathering up more information on the transactional tax? Seeing, yeah, a whole bunch of hands. Okay. Get a little bit more information on how that all works as well. Any, anything else on that subject?
Specifically, do we think it would be legal? Do you think there'd be a way for us to implement it in our situation?
Okay. Brian?
Staff did also present on the general fund reserve policy today, and I'm the only one that's commented on that, so does anyone else have any thoughts?
Valerie?
Oh, I, I just say that I would, especially if Jay is going to be there, it's going to be brought up. So I think that information, I mean, I would assume that it would be brought up, because that is a part of extra revenue, so.
What?
I think it's a fair question as we're preparing the, the budget.
Are you already, how far into that process are you?
So I see the reserve policy is totally separate than the public safety issue. So it, it is not one and the same or even really directly linked. So if council does have a desire to change the, the fund policy to say, for instance, 25 to 35, instead of 30 to 40, we just need direction from council on that. And then what we could do is also provide you with either additional workshop or memo, we would just have a couple of extra questions when it comes to the budget process on, if you did reduce it from 20, 25 to 35, then there'd be a surplus of, a one-year surplus of like 1.5 or something like that million, where would you like us to allocate that future reserve, you know? And so that would be a discussion, how you'd like to utilize that, one of those one-time dollars. And that would clear it up for the budget process.
Yeah, what's the timeline for your draft budget where you would want? Obviously, changes can be made afterwards.
Last Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, so our first budget meeting is May 7th. That is one, five weeks out. So obviously, we need time to compile the documents and make sure we notice publicly and all those things. Sooner rather than later, I would say at the very latest, we could, and again, it depends on what kind of change you're looking at. A simple one-time contribution to a project is easier to disseminate than a potential service level change that involves FTE.
Okay, so if we were to have, I guess, just a, a decision or an interest level on adjusting the reserve policy, which you're moving forward with, leaving it at 30% at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So if we ask council if you want to look at a, a long-term adjustment in the, the policy, I mean, is that a, what level of decision does that need to be? Does that, is that a resolution or ordinance, something we need to have at a business meeting?
I, I think ultimately, if you want to make a decision on the 20, changing that, and I would want to do that sooner than later. So I guess our next meeting would be the April 15th meeting.
Is it something that has to happen? Like, what's the, you know, what's the process, I guess? Is it a, is that a resolution to?
Yeah, the resolution would be easy. The uneasy part is if you're trying to change it in a large enough scale to where we have to renotice it as a, a public hearing again, as far as the budget committee rules. And so depending on the percentage of what that change would be, which will a million and a half dollars, I, I don't think it's going to hit the threshold. But again, I just want to make sure that we're not in violation of local budget law rules.
Okay. So at this point, the reserve policy is 30% minimum. Council, do you want to consider reducing that? We don't have to say an exact number today, but we'll get it on the agenda ASAP to have a, a more permanent discussion if you are interested in entertaining that idea. And I'm just going to go through you all. Dwayne? Okay, Val? Rob?
Well, I have, I have a question. Is there a reason that we wouldn't allow the budget committee to weigh in on this as well?
Because budget committee doesn't set policy, the council sets the policy.
I completely understand, but they actually have, could provide interesting perspective for me. I'm not asking them to set the policy. I'm just wondering if that would be a question for the budget committee and get their advice.
At this point, are you interested in even entertaining the ideas, really the question?
I'm interested in entertaining the question, yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
I'm interested, but I'm also interested in the aspect of doing a one-time adjustment, because that may be simpler at this late time in the game.
Joel?
So I, I agree that organizations that, this isn't the right word, but hoard money and are extremely conservative, they tie up that money needlessly. We, this doesn't fall in that realm completely, but, but the 25 to 35% looks like it wouldn't hurt the city to do that, and so I would, I would entertain it.
Brian?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of going to 25%. I don't know what other information counselors need to make that decision, but it seems pretty straightforward based on the information we have, so I'm ready to do that right now.
DJ?
I have vehemently opposed to reducing our reserves for public safety operations.
Dwayne?
At this moment right now, I'd say no. I don't see the need of it, need, need of doing it at this, at this moment today, so.
Okay. Well, six of you said you were in favor of entertaining the idea, so I will work with Aaron to get that on an agenda ASAP so we can discuss in further detail what level you might be interested in and what that would mean, and have a, have a final decision on that, hopefully. Yep.
So I'd like to say one thing, that there is, I am in favor of that, and I'm going to tell you the reason that I'm in favor of it is because of the input I've received from one member of the budget committee. That's all. That's the only reason I'm in favor of it. I haven't heard from anyone else in the budget committee particularly, but that one person has had a pretty compelling argument, and I wouldn't mind hearing from others if they had a counter position.
Okay. Well, we can probably arrange it so that we have budget committee provide input, the same way that we've been doing with the home builders at a workshop.
I was, I was just thinking, maybe we could have a roundtable to talk about this. Maybe, Rob, what do you think?
All right. I'm going to have to quit my day job, I see. Anything else on that topic? Public safety funding, reserve policy? Okay. Next up, we have a item from the tourism committee. Saw at the bottom, there we go. Took motion from the tourism committee that they have recommended to the city council to increase the number of committee members by two for a total of 11. The reason for expansion is to add another hotelier to capture more voices in the community regarding tourism. The main reason is that they had all high-quality applicants for an open seat this round, and they found it fit to recommend to the city council to expand by two to capture more talent in our community. So they have asked you if you're willing to consider revising the committee membership. And so, I'm just reading that at this moment, but if this is something that you are interested in entertaining when we do agenda review, which is coming up in approximately two seconds, we can raise that as an issue. Okay? So, agenda review is, first of all, we canceled Wednesday's meeting, moved it to today, so we're going to be doing that next. Then our next workshop is scheduled at this time for April 15th, where we have Then our next workshop is scheduled at this time for April 15th, where we have a field trip to the Allen Creek Trail at 10:00 AM, followed by the workshop at 11:45 with our presentations from So Ready, the SBDC, and the Chamber of Commerce. And we are also going to follow up on some of the private streets conversations that we've had with the Home Builders Association recently, as well as I believe we're asking them to provide a new topic. Was that, has that been addressed? Okay. We were asking them to look at their list of things they wanted us to talk about and to pick one to address first. And then April 17th, we have a meeting with a public hearing on the community development block grant needs and priorities for fiscal year 2024, year five. Public hearing on a resolution to consider a special use permit for Parker's Place Resource Center, an ordinance that would annex the Buckmasters subdivision, a resolution that would designate some heritage trees, a resolution to rename the Agnew Lidle Field, a resolution awarding Hydrogeologic Master Services Agreement for the Merlin landfill, a resolution that would award the skate park refurbishment contract, a resolution regarding ODOT IGA number 6 and 7 Streets, multimodal study, ODOT's IGA US Highway 199, Redwood Avenue, Fourth Bridge traffic study, and a motion to review the porta-potties in Riverside Park, and a motion that would approve findings of fact from that public hearing for Parker's Place. It sounds like we also will need to schedule a forum, so a roundtable discussion as soon as possible, hopefully this month. And I also wrote down now reserve policy, so we'll, we'll fit that on the agenda somewhere very soon so that hopefully the, the budget would be as accurate as possible moving into the budget season. Yeah, Rob?
So the last Wednesday meeting, council gave direction to staff to bring back a humanitarian services ordinance, basically as soon as possible. So I'm wondering when we're going to fit that in.
I see that being able to be added to the April 17th meeting?
Yeah, that seems reasonable. We've had, we need to have Mark look at that, and he was on vacation last week. Okay. Anything else pressing for the agenda at this time? Brian?
So regarding the motion from Tourism Advisory and the liaison, I wasn't there for that meeting, but just to speak to their rationale for adding the two people, they have not ever had any issues with getting a quorum. They always have, they have very engaged members. It's always a full room, good conversation. So if they feel that there's benefit adding two more individuals, I would support that. And so I guess I would propose putting it on a business meeting for discussion and adoption.
Rick?
I want to reinforce what Brian said. He had me substitute at that meeting that time, and they were a very passionate group. And they had some very exemplary people who wanted to be on the committee, and because of who's already on the makeup and the passion that's there, because of the limitation of the number, they weren't able to be a candidate. And I suggested that they bring this forward to the council, and I don't see any problem. As Brian said, they don't have a problem with absentees, so it should not be a problem with quorums, and that's usually the case of how large you have a committee. Thank you.
Okay. Are you, we can add that to the consent calendar for April 17th unless there's any objections or concerns? Okay. We'll do that. Anything else that we need to talk about for the agenda? Okay. In that case, how about a motion to move into the, adjourn the workshop, move into the special meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the workshop and convene a city council special meeting.
Thank you. Seconded by Rick. Thank you. All in favor of adjourning the workshop and convening this special city council meeting? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We are going to start off with item number 3A here has second reading of the ordinance that would annex the property located at 2,000 Southwest Bridge Street, map number 360613DD, tax lots 500 and 600 into the city limits. Is there a motion? Dwayne? Yeah? Yeah, no, there's not.
I moved to annex the property located at 2,000 Bridge Street, map number 36-0613DD, tax lot 500 and 600 into the city limits, second reading.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. Seconded by Val. Any discussion on the motion? No? Okay. Dwayne, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
I'm going backwards. Hang on. I'm going to loop back around my normal direction. Brian?
Come back to me, please.
Okay. Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Brian?
No.
Motion passes six to two. Second reading, please, Karen.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass annexing the property located at 2,000 Southwest Bridge Street, map number 360613DD, tax lots 500 and 600 into the city limits.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have some committee appointments, so grab those sheets here. You should have a blue sheet and a green sheet. And first, we will consider the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee is your blue sheet. There's one opening on this committee, and three candidates have applied. They are, in alphabetical order, Dustin Abbott, Rick McClintock, and Larry Sussman. The committee has recommended Larry Sussman. They reached this decision based on the amount of biking that Larry recreationally does as expressed in his application. Additionally, Larry came to the February meeting as a member of the public to see that what the committee was about and provided valuable insight to items of the, on the agenda. So if you could all mark your preference and pass that down this way, I'll move forward with reading the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. There is one opening on this committee, and two candidates have applied. They are, in alphabetical order, Tressa Jumps and Logan Werner. The committee has recommended Tressa Jumps. For the position, she was selected due to her experience volunteering with various nonprofits as well as her work history. She has considerable experience navigating municipal systems as well as the state and federal government. This is advantageous as tree care laws, standards, and programs often cross municipal, state, and federal lines. As the previous person to hold this position was not a tree care professional, the committee wanted to maintain the balance of perspectives among our members by selecting someone who was qualified to serve but could provide a point of view that better represented most of the citizens of Grants Pass. Okay. We have unanimous nods here in support for the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee for Larry Sussman.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Larry Sussman as, on a position on the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Brian. Any discussion on the motion? All right. The motion was to appoint Larry Sussman to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee, and Valerie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Six have supported Tressa Jumps, and one, Dwayne has supported Logan Werner. And DJ, did you have a suggestion? I don't think he did. He said he was going to go with what the committee.
Yeah, thank you. I support his recommendation.
Okay. Supports the board recommendation, which was Tressa Jumps. So is there a motion? Joel?
So I move to appoint Tressa Jumps to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee.
Okay. Seconded by Rick. Any discussion on that motion? All right. Joel, you made the motion to appoint Tressa Jumps to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. How do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next up, we have the consent agenda, and these are items that are usually non-controversial and don't require discussion or presentation. And council president, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item A, resolution renaming the Justifying City County Solid Waste Agency to the Justifying County Solid Waste Agency. Item B, motion approving the comprehensive plan, map, and zone map amendment findings of fact. Item C, motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly investment report for February 2024. Item D, motion approving the minutes of the city council meeting of March 20th, 2024. Item E, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Housing Advisory Committee meeting of February 16th, 2024. Item F, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Parks Advisory Committee meeting of February 8th, 2024. Item G, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Area Planning Commission meeting of February 28th, 2024. Item H, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Tree Advisory Committee meeting of February 12th, 2024. And item I, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Committee on Public Art meeting of February 13th, 2024. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Valerie. And without discussion, Vanessa, you made the motion on the consent agenda. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes eight to zero. Next up, we need a motion to adjourn our special council meeting and move into executive session. This would be for labor negotiations.
I move to adjourn the special council meeting and convene the special council meeting and executive session.
Thank you. Seconded by Rick. All in favor of adjourning the irregular session, moving into executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.